Will you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our secretary Ms. Grant is gone, so Ms. Shaki is in her role right now. Can you please take the role?
I would love to. Ms. Slade.
President.
Dr. Baker.
President.
Dr. Flores.
President.
Ms. Grant is excused. Ms. Lewis.
Yes, here.
Reverend Mathias.
President.
Mr. Ross.
President.
Ms. Shaki, I'm here and President Faub.
President. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And to our celebrations.
Dr. Faub and members of the board, we have five celebrations tonight. And we'd like to begin with the first presentation followed by two additional. The first would be DECA. It's a newly launched program at Central Innovation. That presentation will be followed by our Grand Rapids Art Museums Language Artists Partnership and the Smart Art Partnership, which will be presented by Larry Johnson. I'm sorry. Kurt Johnson and Maggie Malone, not Larry. I think he almost panicked. It will be presented by Kurt Johnson and Maggie Malone.
Good evening, Mrs. Evans. Mrs. Evans, Dr. Faub, distinguished members of our Board of Education. This evening, we would like to recognize DECA. DECA is Distributive Education Clubs of America. It is a program that prepares students for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, management, and entrepreneurship. To showcase their skills in the aforementioned areas, students participate in local, state, and international competitions. Joining me this evening are Mr. Mark Frost, Principal of Innovation Central High School, and Ms. Brenda Cook, teacher, leader, and DECA Chair for the School of Business Leadership and Entrepreneurship at Innovation Central High School. They'll provide a brief update on the School of Business Leadership and Entrepreneurship at Innovation Central High School and celebrate the accomplishments of the DECA team at the regional competition at Kalamazoo College and the state competition in Detroit. Mr. Frost.
Thank you, Dr. Gorman. Mrs. Evans, Dr. Faub, and members of the board. We at Innovation Central High School really think we have a great thing going in many ways, and we really do. And tonight you will hear about our DECA success this year, as well as their success in a special GVSU competition. And Brenda Cook, our lead teacher for the Academy of Business Leadership and Entrepreneurship, is here to tell you about it. Brenda.
Hello. I'll start with DECA. We went to our district competition and we won 28 medals. So from that win, we took almost about 39 students to the state competition in Detroit. And some students did projects that did not medal in their category or were intending to do a written project from the beginning. At the state competition, there were 4,800 students competing, and it's extremely difficult to get a state medal. They have about 500 students that get called up on stage. So the top 10 students in a category are onstage, but only the top five of those students get medals. So only about 225 actually go to the international competition. This year, we had two students that won state medals that got called up on stage, which was amazing. In my 15 years as being a DECA advisor, I've only had six total. It's very, very difficult, and we had two this year. We participated in Shark Tank Week at Davenport. And what that is, is schools, about seven schools come each day of the week and compete in a pitch competition. And for the second year in a row, we won the entire week. So we won $2,500 scholarships to Davenport, which two of our students are using. We did the Titan Business Challenge at Davenport. We did a speed networking event where we had people from the, business people from the community do a speed networking with our students. Our students volunteer with Burton Elementary. They do the Secret Santa in December. In the spring, they volunteer at the family carnival that was held after school. We raised $225 for muscular dystrophy summer camps. And then I wanted to explain the Laker Effect Challenge. What that was, the goal of the Laker Effect initiative is to highlight GVSU civic and community engagement. So they have a platform to fund ideas for faculty, students, or staff who are working with a community partner. And GVSU collegiate entrepreneurs, they partnered with us and they presented a pitch to purchase DECA blazers for us. When our students go to DECA, most of the kids have blazers, and it's required when you get to the higher level competition. But we had five blazers that the kids would share, and one would interchange with the other when they were not competing. And so they gave away $5,000. They heard several pitches, and we, they won the top pitch for us. We won $2,500, which was the most that was given. So that will purchase 30 blazers. So we don't have all of our blazers yet. We have a few, so some of our students still do not have the blazers, but we will have them all by the next competition. And the last thing I wanted to mention is we participated in the 100 Ideas Challenge by Stark Garden. And it was, you had 100 seconds to make a video or a pitch to start a business. So we submitted five ideas from the school at the high school level. They gave away 100, they gave away $100,000. And then now at the second level in July, they're going to give away $20,000 to 10 different winners, once we go back and present what we did. We had two, we won two awards at the 100 Ideas. As a group, as an academy, we did a pitch for a business, to start a photography business, so we could take senior pictures and only charge $25 to our kids for senior pictures. And so that is our academy project. We won for that. And then we had two 10th grade students who won, who want to start a lawn care business. So that was really exciting, that we had two teams that won at the high school level. I think that overall, there were maybe four high school students that won in the competition. Finally, I have a lot of great kids standing behind me, and I have, some of them are seniors that have graduated almost three weeks ago that came back to support us tonight. And I just have to say that, you know, in the Academy of Business, we had two, the two co-valedictorians were from the school, the Academy of Business. I have two kids going to U of M. I have five kids going to Davenport. I have two going to GVSU, two going to Ferris, one Central, one Northern, one Saginaw Valley, two Eastern, and two CC.
Oh, that's nice. That's fantastic.
And a lot of them have tremendous scholarship opportunities. My five going to Davenport have a DECA scholarship of $3,000 per year. And I'm just, I'm just really, really honored to be their teacher and to have the opportunity. I love my job. I love this district. And I'm very fortunate to have a principal who supports me 100%, and Dr. Gorman has supported me since he was my principal back at Creston. And so I just want to, you know, thank you for recognizing these guys. If you could stand up, because they are the real...
Congratulations. Congrats. Congrats.
Nice work. Good for you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Don't you know one of those?
Amazing. I've seen those competitions, and they are pretty intense there. But good evening, President Dr. Faub, Mrs. Evans, and our other distinguished board members. It gives me a great pleasure to be with you today from the world of fine arts, where something is always exciting and inspirational going on. So tonight, we have some special guests with us tonight that you'll hear about, a special program in partnership with the Grand Rapids Art Museum, as well as Grand Rapids Public Schools. And I have here with me our Director of Fine Arts, Maggie Malone, who's going to share with you some of the context, and then our special guest.
Thank you. Welcome, Mrs. Evans, Dr. Faub, and members of the board. We're excited to be here again for our eighth year in a row with the Grand Rapids Art Museum to celebrate the Language Artist Program, which is a program for third graders in our schools, where students come together, they come to the Gram, and they create a piece of art, and they write about their story. And our special guest is here now. Our timing is amazing. Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Emily Jarvey, who is from the Gram, and she's going to talk about our amazing winner from Southwest Community Campus, and her name is Emily Flores. Kimberly Flores, I apologize.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emily Jarvey, and I'm the School Experience Manager at the Grand Rapids Art Museum. I joined Gram in July of last year, and I wanted to say how much I've loved getting to know the Language Artist Program this year, this school year, and working on it so closely with Maggie and other professionals within the Grand Rapids Public Schools community. We had about 1,500 students participate in the program this year overall. 30 total schools, 23 of those schools were Grand Rapids Public Schools. And I wanted to say how overwhelmed and impressed we were with the level of submissions that we received. The quality of the writing, the quality of the artwork was absolutely outstanding this year, and we were so thrilled. I've provided copies of the postcards of some of the finalists from Grand Rapids Public Schools for you to enjoy and to take home. We had, for the 30 participating schools, each school had the opportunity to submit up to two finalists per school. So this year, we had 49 total finalists. And Kimberly Flores from Southwest Community Campus was one of the three overall program finalists this year. We also, because of the level of writing sophistication that we received, this year, I wanted to mention that we awarded a special writing award to a student from Shawmet Hills Elementary, Kira Stauffer. We gave her an exceptional writing award at our Language Artist Celebration on May 16th. So we're so proud of the Grand Rapids Public School students, all the students and educators and professionals, administrators that work with this program and support it. And now I'd like to introduce Kimberly Flores from Southwest Community Campus, and she's going to read the narrative writing that she created, as well as her compare and contrast writing. And be on the screen behind you is the artwork that she created, the visual arts lesson piece. So thank you so much, Kimberly, for being here. I'm so glad you could join us, and I'll let you take it away.
In the faraway grassy jungle, there was a creature named Bobo. She was a big yellow and red draft bird. She had a big long neck and a short tail. Also, she had big wings that were three feet long. She looked very tall. She was as tall as a tree. Some of her friends called Bobo big neck. She loved to eat two things, red apples and green leaves. She sometimes loved to go out and see the grass, the grass and the nature, but one problem that she has was gossiping. One day, Bobo was walking through the jungle and saw a snake and a bunny. She thought to herself, hmm, maybe I should see what they are doing. I know, I'm going to hide, I'm going to hide behind a tree. So she hid behind a tree and listened closely and very quietly. She tried not to make a noise. She heard snakes say, Lily the butterfly thinks she's the most beautiful in the jungle. Don't you feel that somebody's watching us? Said the bunny. So Bobo was trying to get closer and crack, she broke a stick. Snake said, did you hear that? Yes, said his friend. They were both looking around for what it was, but nothing was there. Bobo was trying to tiptoe silently where they won't see her ginormous body. Finally, she went very far where they won't see her. She said, maybe I should tell, maybe I should tell everybody what she was, what she was talking about. So she went to tell everyone. She told them every single word that she heard come out of their mouths. All the animals said, should you be mind your business? It's not nice to get in other people's business. Bobo was like, oh, it's fine. Bobo was tired, so she took a nap on the green grass. She felt like something was wrong, but she didn't know what it was. She kept moving and moving from one side to the other. I don't know what's wrong, but I can't go to sleep, she thought. She tried to go to sleep again, but she couldn't. I know, maybe it is because I got into the other creature's business. I had to go tell them that I'm sorry. The next day, she got all ready, and she went to try to find Snake and Bunny. She told Snake and Bunny, I'm sorry, please forgive me. I didn't mean to get in your business. The Snake and Bunny did forgive her, and now she has more friends. Now tell me, have you ever gone to anyone else's business? I'm going to compare and contrast Matthew Allen's The Broken Mask with my artwork. The Broken Mask and my artwork both have animals and nature. The animals in my artwork are a turtle, a snake, and a giraffe creature. And the Broken Mask painting, there are a black horse, a brown horse, and one white horse. They both, in both paintings, there are rock, and there are also clouds. There are no birds in both paintings. My artwork, my artwork is different because the Broken Mask, there are dark clouds and it's, and it's gloomy. In my artwork, I have white clouds, and it's bright and not gloomy. In my artwork, I have trees in the background, and in the Broken Mask, there are boats. Finally, my artwork is a collage. The Broken Mask is a painting.
Amazing, powerful words. Emily, or Kimberly's family is here too, if we could, and her principal, Mr. Carlos De La Barrera.
Good evening once again.
Evening.
I believe that children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Some very riveting words to a song, but very true and salient when you think about them. All of the good things that are going on in the world today, our children will be charged to continue those things. All the challenges in the world, our children will be charged to find solutions and resolve those things. And so our students have had a wonderful opportunity for the past six years to stress their minds and think about what the future could hold. And so we're here to present, and Maggie will share with you, a very exciting competition that our students have participated in that allows them to think outside the box in terms of what we can do or what we should be thinking about regarding the future there. So I'm going to turn it over to Maggie Malone and introduce our special guest from Consumers Energy.
Thank you. We are excited to present our Smart Art program. This was conceived by myself and Lori Burrell, who has since retired from Consumers Energy. But my first year here, Lori had this great idea of getting students involved in renewable and sustainable energy. And Lori had a daughter, has a daughter, who was a passionate artist. And so she kind of pitched an idea, and so we created Smart Art that day, which is students making art with a renewable theme. And this is a competition that's open to our ninth through 11th graders in GRPS. And they, it's three parts. One is they create a piece. The second is they create an artist statement that explains the theme and how it's connecting in their ideas regarding renewable and sustainable energy. And then the third category is how the theme and the artwork together. And they go through two rounds of jury. It's judged internally. We narrow it to the top 20. So as you're looking around the space, if you see a green sticky, that means that they made it into the top 20. And when you see a pink sticky, that means that they made it into the top 10. And we have outside judges come in who are experts in the field of art, from Kendall College of Art and Design, Grand Valley State University, and Grand Rapids Community College. So Consumers Energy has been an amazing partner and leader in this competition. They've graciously generated their time and financial support. Students receive different prizes, including iPads, computers, and the ultimate prize, a college scholarship, which is amazing, and they've sustained it, which is really impressive because, again, this is our sixth year. And then Art Prize also is a huge partner, and they have deepened the partnership each year by adding different components. It's really amazing to think about being in high school and having your work in such a venue where over 500,000 people will see your work. I don't know about you, but I think that's pretty awesome. So that's a huge prize in itself. And so I think this program has grown and developed each year, and the work has just gotten stronger, and the statements are getting stronger. And I'm just so proud to be part of this organization and to advocate for our students and to work with such amazing community partners. And with that, I would like to introduce Rebecca Gayette, who is the Education Director with Art Prize. Becca.
Thank you, Maggie, and thank you so much, Board, for having me here today. Just walking in this room two weeks ago when we had the top 20 announcement, it's amazing to see the work and the growth of the work. I've been with Art Prize, this will be my fourth season, and every year, the pieces just get stronger and stronger, and it must be a hard choice.
It is.
But just, just to be included in this partnership has been amazing for us, to be able to sit where you were, are right now, two weeks ago, and watch the smiles on the faces of the students as we went through the top 20, and then hosting the top 10, which was last week, at the Art Prize hub. And then during Art Prize, inviting students up on stage for our top 20 announcement and have the winner selected, which is a live televised event in front of many, many people. It's just really special. And I just want to thank Maggie for championing this program, all the students for, you know, taking that creative risk and being, put themselves out there, which is always a really hard thing to do. And Roger and Consumers Energy for all your support, so.
Agreed.
Now we have Roger Morgestern, who is the Senior Director for Communications...
Sounds good, yeah.
...with Consumers Energy.
Well, good evening, Board. Yes, I am Roger Morgestern, excuse me, with Consumers Energy. Maggie and I have been doing this for six years, and it is exciting. Every year, as Becca said, the artwork seems to get a little bit better, the artist statements get a little bit stronger. I think young Kimberly who was up here, she could, she'll be a contestant, I think, in a few years, so.
Yes, she will.
At Consumers Energy, we've really made a commitment to renewable energy and sustainability. This spring, we announced some planet goals, which among them is to reduce our carbon footprint by 80% by 2040 and stopping the use of coal to generate electricity. And while I didn't make those decisions... Thank you. We love it when we get applause. We got, we got applause from the students when we talked about that last week at Art Prize. I like to think that something like we've done here for the last six years with Smart Art has helped our leaders make those decisions about our planet, because the artwork that surrounds you, the top 10 is around the dais here. It's just an amazing work in thinking about the future of our planet and how renewable energy and sustainability is so important to keeping our planet healthy for many, many years to come. I had the opportunity to tour the Citywide Art Show for the first time this spring, and wow, I was really impressed. I mean, even students kindergarten, I'm 52, I couldn't draw that well, so, but I went into writing, so, but just amazing. And we thank Grand Rapids Public Schools for your investment in your fine arts program and to hire a great director in Maggie Malone and some fantastic art teachers who have become my friends. Got lots of hugs when we were here two weeks ago. It's really a great partnership. And the 10, 10 works that you see around here will be on a huge banner outside of our substation, our elsewhere substation at Market and Fulton, otherwise known as across the street from the Bob. That'll be on display for all of Art Prize, as Maggie and Becca said, half a million people will see your students' artwork on a huge banner during Art Prize. So we're really excited to be part of it, and we thank you for taking the time this evening. Thank you.
We could have Lametria Edie Johnson and Ron Borben come forward to share with us regarding the Nellie Stevens Travel Award.
Good evening again, Mrs. Evans, President Faub, distinguished members of our Board of Education. I'm here tonight to present the Nellie H. Stevens Travel Award for 2018. To be eligible for consideration of this award, interested GRPS teachers who have at least five years of service to the district submitted a written narrative on how their summer travel plans out of the country will enhance the teaching and learning of GRPS students. This year, the academic team had eight candidates who submitted letters of interest. The academic team reviewed submissions, and I am pleased to announce and to present the winner to Burton Middle School's own, John Lager. And John is sitting right next to Principal Edie. John will be receiving a check for $1,500 to support his travels and to bring lots of that learning back to our students in the Grand Rapids Public Schools, specifically Burton Middle. And at this time, Principal Edie will tell you a little bit more about John, and then we pass some pictures around, and John can tell you a little bit more about those pictures. Principal Edie?
Thank you, Mrs. Evans, Madam President, distinguished board members. Like Dr. Gorman said, I'm Lametria Edie, Principal of Burton Middle. Mr. Lager, 13 years of experience. He is certified in five different areas, correct?
Four.
Four or five. I couldn't even remember. But very selfless, gentlemen. I think it was about October, September, October, I came to him, asking him, I need your assistance. He took an overload for our English as a second language class and did not complain about it. He is very selfless. I appreciate him dearly. I've worked with him four years now, and Mr. Lager definitely deserves this opportunity, exhibits it in many ways. He knows that 85 to 90% of our students speak Spanish, so he has taken on the opportunity of learning Spanish at the collegiate level. How many courses did you take? I know he's had one for sure, but in addition to...
12 credit hours so far.
12 credit hours. So he's serious about the work that has to be done to connect with our students. So at this time, I do have the check. I think I'm going to split it in half with you. But I want you to share in brevity about this opportunity.
So good evening. I'm John Lager. I'm honored and excited to be here, just not solely for receiving money for travel, but also enjoyed presentations so far. So I've always kind of wanted to learn another language. I'm a big learner, a couple, couple master's degrees, and just kind of always was excited about learning myself, as well as sharing that with students. And I've always wanted to learn Spanish, even before coming to Burton, but going to Burton, especially because of the student population and all of the amazing, so many students and families are bilingual, like I want to encourage them to keep, keep that up, and I know how important that is for our world and community. And I feel for my personal reasons too, for travel and also for keeping my brain intact, you know, you know, always, always learning. And I think a second language was, was a good fit for me. I tried purchasing Rosetta Stone and going that route, and you know, it doesn't, doesn't really engage, and it takes a lot of motivation to do it that way. So I felt travel was the best way I could get the most out of it. So I did travel to Guatemala a couple times in the past summers for a few weeks here and there, and really enjoyed it and learned, learned tons. And so this time, of course, will be all the better because I won't be spending as much of my own money, which I really appreciate. And so I go to a school starting June 10th, coming up this next Sunday for, until the 28th, so for about two and a half weeks. And for six hours a day, I'll have one-on-one intense Spanish...
12 credit hours so far.
12 credit hours, so he's serious about the work that has to be done to connect with our students. So at this time, I do have the check, I think I'm gonna split it in half with you, but I want you to share in brevity about this opportunity.
So, good evening, I'm John Lager. I'm honored and excited to be here, just not solely for receiving money for travel, but also enjoyed presentations so far. So I've always kind of wanted to learn another language. I'm a big learner, a couple masters degrees, and just kind of always was excited about learning myself, as well as sharing that with students. And I've always wanted to learn Spanish even before coming to Burton, but going to Burton, especially because of the student population and all of the amazing, so many students and families are bilingual, like I want to encourage them to keep that up, and I know how important that is for our world and community. And I feel for my personal reasons too, for travel and also for keeping my brain intact, you know, always learning, and I think a second language was a good fit for me. I tried purchasing Rosetta Stone and going that route, and, you know, it doesn't really engage, and it takes a lot of motivation to do it that way, so I felt travel was the best way I could get the most out of it. So I did travel to Guatemala a couple times in the past summers for a few weeks here and there, and really enjoyed it and learned tons, and so this time, of course, will be all the better because I won't be spending as much of my own money, which I really appreciate. And so I go to school starting June 10th, coming up this next Sunday until the 28th, so for about two and a half weeks, and for six hours a day, I'll have one-on-one intense Spanish instruction and also live with a family, Guatemalan family, and learn the culture that way. It's just a great opportunity and it'll help me to more relate culturally with our students and families and be able to participate in parent-teacher conferences a little bit better. And I just, you know, it's not going to be a quick thing, I'll be fluent automatically, you know, just getting there slowly, and it takes some time. But definitely excited for the opportunity, and muchas gracias por la beca. Appreciate Mr. Ron Gorman and Dr. Maite Gunno, Ms. Bridget Chaney and Dr. Laura Lemoore and Mr. Matthew Berisford for considering me and choosing me for this opportunity. And I think that's all I have, look forward to continuing to learn.
Madam President and members of the Board, at this time, we'd like to begin our recognition of employees who have provided the district, the families and students, 40 years of service. And we would like to begin with Larry Johnson and Ken Clomparence from the Operations Department.
Just happy to be here this evening to really celebrate the work and the commitment that some of our employees have given over the last 40-plus years in the district. Ken and I will be sharing with you just two employees tonight who have spent over 40 years in the district. I'll start with the first individual, Michael Brown. Is Mr. Brown here? As you can see, he is a proud father of, what's it, seven girls?
Seven girls.
Seven girls that all attended the Grand Rapids Public Schools. I know his entire family's here. If you guys don't mind standing, just be recognized. This is, you know, I think 40 years in the district, any organization is pretty impressive. And he spent from 1976 to 2000 working as a custodian and head custodian at South Middle School, Oakdale Elementary, Iroquois Middle School, Henry Park Elementary. Man, they're all closed. Along with Ottawa Hills. From 2000 to 2006, he was the head custodian of facilities in operation at various locations. And since 2007 to 2018, he's been an ops specialist in South Sector. I've had the privilege of working with Mike for about 23 years here in the district in just various capacities, and he just goes the extra mile. And so when he said he was gonna receive his 40 years, I went back and calculated, and I told him this afternoon, well, he had like 39 years, and he says, no, you're wrong, I got 43. So he kept up with it. Mike, just thank you for your service and for all you do for the district. And on behalf of the Superintendent, who is not able to be here tonight, we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
It's my honor to recognize Mr. Freddie Powell. That's a long time to serve one employer, and we really appreciate what he's done. He also has been around the district, served at Brookside, Creston, Iroquois Middle, Northeast, Ottawa Hills High School. In 1998, moved to Central High School and was there through 2005. And since 2005, has been in the East Sector and is currently working and serving us at Coit Elementary. And we just appreciate everything you've done for the district. 40 years is a long time, and certainly something to be very proud of. On behalf of the Superintendent, congratulations.
If we could now have Dr. Ronald Gorman, Laura Lemoore, and Mark Frost come to present awards to the Secondary Division for folks who have achieved 40 years of service.
This evening, we are honored to recognize Mrs. Patricia Nozel. All right? Mrs. Patricia Nozel is a rock star educator in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. She was with me at Creston High, a fellow polar bear. I do not believe there was ever an event where Ms. Nozel was absent. She was at every single event with her camera, taking pictures of students, putting them up on the bulletin board the next day. She can make a mean peanut butter sandwich as well, if ever you get hungry throughout the day. Ms. Nozel is a phenomenal teacher. She got her start at Burton Middle School and at Renaissance Montessori Center, of course at Creston High School. And while she was at Creston High School, she also worked with my colleague, Mr. Mark Frost. And when we opened up Innovation Central, Ms. Nozel knew that she had to follow the Creston students over to Innovation Central, and she is still there today, serving our students just like she did at Creston. So it is my honor to recognize Ms. Patricia Nozel. And on behalf of Superintendent Weatherall Neal, congratulations. My colleagues, just say a few words, please.
Short and sweet, I got to know Ms. Nozel because I was signing RFPs for people who were requesting her for tutoring and summer school. And upon looking into that a little bit further and saying, what's going on with this staff member that everybody wants to have be a part of the action? And she surrounded herself and immersed herself in getting our seniors to graduation. Students with IUPs who are experiencing those challenges, and she just helped reduce those barriers for them and get them to where they're going. So it is with a great pleasure that I feel honored to be able to say thank you in person again for that work.
So Mrs. Evans, Dr. FOB, members of the Board, I'd just like to add just a few things here. She was a senior in GRPS, went off to college and returned, just like we're trying to do with the academy for teaching and learning. And so 22 years at Burton Middle School, 13 at Creston High School, five years at Innovation Central High School, and we've been lucky to have. And County, you are. Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying here. It's not a retirement announcement, she's coming back for years to come. It's a celebration of the 40 years of serving special education students as well as regular education students. Besides teaching, she's taken on the following roles: E2020 after-school tutor, athletic director, special education coordinator at Burton Middle School, key club advisor, summer school teacher for 14 years, and she still goes, as Dr. Gorman said, to many, many athletic events every season, every year, to take photos of students, student athletes, and post those photos on the bulletin board outside her classroom for everybody to see. The success of students has always been her focus, and she has come through for them time and time again, and will continue to do so next year and beyond. So with that, on behalf of the Superintendent, Teacher Extrudinaire, Patricia Nozel.
All right. Dr. Gorman, if you would remain, and Bridget Chaney and Bernard Colton, if you would come on behalf of the Elementary Division.
It is cold in here tonight. Usually I'm dying from the heat.
So for the next two presentations, my colleagues from our academic team are going to take over, so Ms. Bridget Chaney.
Good evening, Mrs. Evans, President FOB, and members of the Board. Thank you for having us here this evening. I am so excited to present Mrs. Tomaszewski with Bernard Colton, the principal of Campus Elementary, 40 years in the district. She said today, oh, it has not felt like 40 years, it's just a blip. It's very, very fast. We are so very excited to present this to her tonight. I will let Mr. Colton speak a little bit about her service and the many great things that she does with and for our children here at Grand Rapids Public Schools. Congratulations.
Good evening, Mrs. Evans, good evening, Board President, good evening, Board. I would like to introduce Ms. Tomaszewski. She is an Ottawa Hills graduate. Her father is a school, was a school social worker at Grand Rapids Public Schools. So she is, what'd you say, a second-generation employee at Grand Rapids Public Schools. She was a part of the Title IX movement in female sports at Ottawa Hills. So there's a lot of history there. She has been with our district for 40 years and still going. She has been at Burton Elementary, West Middle, Ottawa Hills, Ottawa outward bound, Jefferson, Oakdale, and of course Campus. She is a joy every day to have in the building. When I came to Campus Elementary, one of my friends at Ottawa said, look up Ms. Tomaszewski, she will help you. She will make it better. Every day, she makes it better. She enjoys her students, she enjoys telling me when I'm doing something wrong and when I'm doing something right. I get a lot of compliments, like, you're doing a great job, keep it going, lot of positive, lot of positive compliments. I would like to thank you for being a member of our team. I know the kids enjoy her. We got to introduce to the kids that she has 40 years. So the students were so excited today to know that. We appreciate you, we love you, and we thank you for being with us for 40 years.
Thank you. Matthew Berisford, on behalf of Elementary and Preschool.
Good evening, Assistant Superintendent Evans, President FOB, and members of the Board. Excited tonight to introduce Pam Holden and recognize her for her 40 years of powerful teaching and learning in the district. If you think about our district and how far we've gone in 40 years, through the highs and the not-so highs, she has kept her commitment on the kids, not the drama, and I thank you for that. You think about 40 years and how many children's lives you get to connect with deeply, that's over 1,000. I did a little math back there. She started out her first 15 on the Fine Arts Team, teaching music and the passion of music for our youngest students, and then she transitioned to East Leonard in 1992 and has been there 26 years, committed to those families and those students. That kind of loyalty is rare and so appreciated. So thank you, Pam. Are you with us?
That's amazing, really amazing. And I love looking over at Ms. Lake, because she's know so many, know so many of these folks.
I know.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like it's that long ago.
Pretty awesome. So Julie, are you presenting?
Just going ahead.
Got it. We, our student representatives are finished for the year. Do we have board, public comment for Board agenda items?
No, we do not.
All right, so we're on to the secretary's report.
Very good, just three items, three quick items this evening. As the 1718 school year winds down, please be reminded that there will be half-days of school, the latter part of this week, on Wednesday, June 6, Thursday, June 7, and Friday, June 8. Please contact your child's schools for those exact dismissal times. In partnership with Ferris State University and the Michigan College Access Network, high school Y-Achiever students have the chance to take a free college course this summer. Career and education planning, which will be held June 18 through August 10 on Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Ferris State University Downtown GRCC campus. Please contact Sonia Hernandez at 616-855-9620, or email s hernandez@grymca.org for more information. And lastly, on Saturday, June 9, at 10:30 a.m., GRPS student athletes can receive a free sports physical at Spectrum Health located at 4100 Lake Drive Southeast, Suite 300. Please contact your high school athletic office for additional information. Concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Committee Chair updates, Becca, it's you.
Very good, yes. Finance, so we had a very full agenda this last finance committee meeting. There was a pretty significant purchasing agenda, so I would ask my board members, fellow board members, to take a peek at that before we move to that part of the agenda this evening. A lot of that has to do with timing as we're moving toward Budget Amendment 2 this evening and the end of our fiscal year, so just take a peek at that, please. Two significant donations as well. Innovation Central Advanced Technology Education Initiative, the Smart Zone Local Development Finance Authority, nearly $400,000 grant. We will be coordinating, of course, with bond planning going on there, so gosh, exciting things happening at Innovation Central. Just really happy as the finance committee to approve that donation and do great things for our kids at Innovation Central. And then huge thanks to Grand Rapids Community College for donating, gosh, so much gym equipment for both Union and Ottawa, so take a peek at those this evening. Let's see, we're gonna see Amendment 2 tonight, and I'm not gonna steal the thunder of Mr. Oberst, but thanks, of course, to conservative budgeting. We've experienced some growth in the fund balance, which always feels good as a school board member, so we'll see that tonight. And then we got our first look at the budget for 1819. So the good news is there are no significant changes to people or programs. We're looking good as we move into next year, so board members, just please know, we will see that in its entirety at the June 11 work session, and then June 18 at 5:30 p.m. is the public hearing, and at 6:30, we'll vote on that budget. That's my report.
All right, thank you. City Board Liaison Committee, a chunk of that meeting will be reported out next in our superintendent's report. We also, the mayor talked about the work that the city has been doing to advance racial equity, and we talked about some opportunities to share wisdoms on that, but anything else, Dr. Baker?
No. Good meeting.
All right, so the superintendent's report, we'll roll right into that.
Okay, so we'd like to ask John Helmo to come forward, and he's going to share with us regarding the Weggie Foundation Green School Yard Grant.
Julie, what am I hitting here? Oh. President, Mrs. Evans, members of the Board, it is an honor to be here tonight with our colleagues here and Mark from the Weggie Foundation to really celebrate in what you're gonna be voting on later with a generous donation from our friends at the Weggie Foundation that really came at a perfect time, as we are a couple years into the work with Cities Connecting Children to Nature Network, where we have been working diligently to look at how do we engage youth in the Grand Rapids Master Plan, address areas of park deficiency, and really start to utilize the expertise we learned with some of the other cities around green schoolyards. And in all honesty, we couldn't be doing what we're doing without our friends at the City Parks and Rec, the Parks Village, and our friends at Weggie Foundation. So with us tonight, Lynn Hemstra, who's the Executive Director of Our Community's Children, which is our joint office between the city and the schools. She's gonna paint a little bit of history, because that's kind of a cool part, being one of just a handful of cities across the country to get this honor to engage in the work around green schoolyards. And that's gonna lead up to David Marquardt, our City Parks Director, who's gonna do kind of the design reveal around Burton, Burton School Green Yard, Green School Yard and the Plaster Creek, and then we'll... and the Plaster Creek, and then we'll, we'll close it out with Mark to say a few words on behalf of the foundation. So Lynn?
Thank you, John. President FOB, members of the Board, and Carolyn Evans, thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you on Connecting Children to Nature. This initiative began in 2016, when our community's children received a grant from the National League of Cities and the Children in Nature Network. And we were one of seven cities nationally to receive this grant to be a demonstration site for how we promote equitable access to nature for children to learn and to play. And as you know, why this is so important is because when children have access to nature, it increases their health and well-being, it promotes curiosity and learning, and it certainly encourages environmental stewardship. What we did over the past two years is that we really focused in three key areas. The first one was how do we promote alignment with community partners around a shared vision? That shared vision was all Grand Rapids youth have equitable access to natural places and spaces for a happy and healthy life. And we looked at, we took an inventory of our playgrounds and our parks and our joint use agreement with the city and the schools. Secondly, we worked to intentionally integrate environmental education within our after-school programs, particularly through the Expanded Learning Opportunity Network, so that there's better collaboration and utilization of outdoor activities. And thirdly, most importantly, we really promoted a community place-based response in which we authentically engaged youth and parents into what it is that they wanted in the redesign of the park. And we particularly looked at the southwest neighborhood around Burton Elementary and Middle Schools and Buchanan. Why? Because Buchanan was obviously being rebuilt, and the Plaster Creek Family Park, which is right next to Burton School, had to be redesigned. So what was most exciting for me is that 5th graders from Burton Elementary, under the leadership of Principal Woodside and her staff, were actively engaged, they're pictured here, actively engaged with our community's children. They did a park audit, walking audit. They researched best practices for park design. They developed a video. They interviewed their family and friends, and they made recommendations before architects, engineers, and planners at City Hall, and met the mayor as well. They are so excited about what they've done, and I have to say that this Wegi grant that we've received is, they're going to see the fruits of their labor, and they're going to see park amenities come into being because of what they've done. And that's all about really instilling in children love of their parks and of nature and, and what they can contribute to the city. So this has been a model that we can use with other neighborhoods throughout the city, and we're really excited about this partnership and appreciate the leadership of you, President FOB, and Mayor Bliss, the Superintendent and the City Manager. Thank you very much. David?
Thank you, Lynn. David Marquardt, Director of Grand Rapids Parks and Recreation. We had the grand design reveal last week at Burton Elementary. Many of those children that you saw in that previous photo were there that evening to share in the excitement of revealing that design, but also in talking with the local WZZM news team and in sharing their design ideas and sharing the process that Lynn spoke about. This has been an incredible opportunity. In the Parks Department, as John had mentioned, we're making great strides with the Parks Millage that was passed in 2013. The challenge that we have is that we're always grappling with what really needs to be done and what we would like to be doing. This Wegi grant fulfills both of those opportunities, and so with the $703,000 from the Wegi Foundation, we are leveraging that with $550,000 of Parks Millage funding to implement some really great ideas down here at Burton Elementary and Plaster Creek Family Park, but also at Sigsbee Family Park in Grand Rapids, Buchanan Elementary, and down at Kenosha Park and School Site. This image is just a couple of ideas that the kids shared and developed with Lynn as a part of their park walk and evaluation. Much of this stems from our Parks Master Plan update as well, where we're looking at nature-based play experiences. And so the children are not only learning about some of those great opportunities right in their back door, but we're building in some of those as play environments as well. This is a great little image of an outdoor classroom, so not only we're building in play value, but we're building in some new opportunities for children to take some of that educational learning and opportunity outside, outside of the classroom. On great days like today, there's no better place to do some, some real learning in that natural environment. This is a three-year grant from the Wegi Foundation, again totaling $703,000 and spread across those four sites that I had mentioned. A great opportunity, and we're, we're so appreciative of all of your support.
Good evening, President FOB, Assistant Superintendent Evans and Board Members. I'm Mark Van Putten, President of the Wegi Foundation. It's really a special opportunity to be here this evening, given the longstanding partnership between the Wegi Foundation and Grand Rapids Public School System and Mr. Wegi's commitment to education, particularly environmental education. As someone in a leadership position with the foundation community, I especially want to thank you, the members of the Board, for your leadership. It's the continuity of quality leadership at the Board, with the Superintendent and her Cabinet, that gives foundations the confidence to make multi-year significant investments. So thank you for your ongoing leadership. This was a natural one for the Wegi Foundation. Our trustees have adopted our goals, and I just want to read a brief excerpt from one of our goals, which is to assure access to experiential environmental education for public school students that is regular, systematic, integrated with curricula, and connected with real-world community initiatives. So this was an easy one for us, and our trustees were enthusiastic about this particular partnership. The final thing I want to highlight is the nature of the collaboration and how impressive it is to have Lynn and Dave and their colleagues working together. If you look at the New Parks Master Plan, you see the public school sites included in the inventory of that space, and the commitment of the Wegi Foundation to equitable access to nature is deep and strong, and with this collaboration, it is really a privilege for us to be able to participate and make this possible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. If there are any questions or additional information?
I want to express my, my huge thanks to all of you for your leadership. This is something, I, it's dear to my heart. I was sharing with you, a couple of you earlier, that my son went to the zoo school, and it wasn't the zoo, it was that time in the park, and how profound that place, that green place, even though it's full of invasive species and garbage or whatever, but Mr. K led my child that year so profoundly that it has changed his outlook on the world. So the power of our green space within the city with our kids, we don't have to necessarily send them far away, it's right here in which they can enter. So the extent to which you're leading that, I think, is going to change lives and change people, change children's sense of their own place here in the city. So, just huge, huge thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Larry Johnson, Summer Safety Procedures.
Good evening again. It's more talk about the end of the school year than summer. And as you know, the, it's hard to believe, we just one more, one more full day in school than three half-days. And just wanted to let the Board know that we have a, just a full, robust plan in place to get our kids home safe. Not only that, as we, as we roll into the summer, to continue to work with our community partners to keep our kids in educational summer enrichment programs that are safe, so we prepare for them to come back next year. We've, we've identified what we considered all of our locations of concern and put, put some practices and resources in place to help our students pass through the community without any problems. We just want to encourage the community that as our kids get out, particularly on the next, the three half-days, our youngsters get out, they're excited to be home, get out for the summer, and sometimes not always abandon the, the traffic signs and the crosswalks. So we are getting all of our folks out of these buildings and getting them out into the neighborhoods to make sure that our youngsters can cross the street safely, working with, with Grand Rapids Police to help some of the, the major thoroughfares, Cesar Chavez, that, that corner there at Hall and, and Granville. It's a huge concern for us as our kids are just sometimes dart out in the street, as well as other locations. So just want you to know that we have a plan in place, hopefully get our kids now letting home safe, but also to stay connected with them throughout the summer to bring them back. And on Monday, the 11th of June, just hard to believe, that we'll start planning for the opening of the school year. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, if you would remain, and if Mr. Green would join him to talk about our Summer Meals Program.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Dr. FOB.
Ms. Evans and the board members, thank you for this opportunity to be here. I'm a representative of the Food and Nutrition Services Program, and I'm honored to be here to talk about our Meet Up to Eat Up program, which is our summer feeding program. That program was basically set up to bridge that gap for our children in the community who may be very dependent upon the school breakfast and national lunch program that are offered every day at our Grand Rapids Public School. So bridging that gap, providing opportunities for the children to receive some nutrition meals. Right now, we have 32 sites, which includes some of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, as well as our different partners within the community that will be feeding our kids this summer. Normally, those programs will have three different options. One is breakfast, lunch, and snack. You can only offer two. So some offer, most of ours offer breakfast and lunch, some offer lunch and snack. So again, that's 32 sites for our children. Now, last year, 2007, which we're hoping for a better year this year, which was a good year last year, but that offered us 43 days that we could provide these meals to the community. In those 43 days, we offered, we served 22,337 breakfasts, 49,838 lunches, 8,726 snacks. So every day, these children were offered this opportunity. Now, in most of these sites also, these sites are open, so anyone under the age of 18 is eligible to come in and receive a free meal. There is no cost at all. So those are open for those individuals also. This is our, been involved with this numerous years. Every year, we've seen an increase. We've added an additional two to three sites this year, one being another major apartment complex. So we're hoping that with their push, we'll see, you'll see these signs around the community. So that'll be out there encouraging the children to, to come on in and get a free meal.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Question?
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Great.
Thank you.
All right.
The superintendent's reports.
We have several action items on tonight's agenda. The first is the Budget Amendment, as Ms. Shotkey brought up, and Mr. Oberst will come and walk us through that.
Good evening, Mrs. Evans, Dr. FOB, Board Members. Ms. Shotkey, don't be fearful about stealing my thunder in the future, okay?
All right, very good.
This time of year, as has been the case for a number of years, not only we're working on the next year's budget, let me get this to stay, here we go, but we also look at the current year budget and a possible amendment to get us to the year-end. We brought Amendment 1 to the General, Special Revenue, and Debt Service Funds back in February, and tonight you have Amendment 2 to all three of those funds to get us through the end of this 1718 fiscal year. This went to the, as Ms. Shotkey mentioned, this went to the Finance Committee last Tuesday, just by virtue of a high-level review on the General Fund, our main operating fund. Most of the adjustments we made related to, or a number of them related to, we now have an audited fall count, and that impacts our state aid revenue, so we adjusted revenue for that final fall count. We recall, we get paid on a blended count, so it was 90% of the fall of last year's count, 10% of the prior spring count. So those together computed out to our blended count, and we adjusted our revenue for the remainder of the year based on that impacts both state aid revenue and property tax revenue. We also, on the grant programs within the General Fund, throughout the year, there's been kind of in-and-outs with federal programs, the title programs, in terms of what our final allocations were. And so we did get some increase in those allocations that came with the last several weeks, if you will. And so we adjusted both the revenue and expenditure side to those federal programs. And remember again, the grant programs have a zero impact on fund balance. Whatever comes in, that's how much we spend, a zero impact. When it's all said and done on the General Operating Fund, we added, we'll add, Amendment 2 will add about $426,000 to the General Fund, fund balance. And as I indicated in the Finance Committee, after, if Amendment 2 is, is passed, then that General Fund, fund balance percentage will be 7.61%. Computed under the early warning criteria, 5% minimum fund balance, this adds $426,000, get our fund balance projected to be at the end of the year at 7.61%. It's almost, well, 2.6% higher than what's minimum required. As it relates to the Special Revenue Fund...
Can we just stop here in case anyone has questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Does anyone have questions about the, the Amendment to the General Operating Fund?
Is the fund balance percent increased from what you were expecting?
Yeah, we, we started the year, I'll just give you a little history. The budget that was passed last June for this year got us to a 5.71% fund balance. We, we completed our 16, our 7, I'm sorry, 1617 audit. We added some fund balance by virtue of that audit.
Right.
Started 8%. So after the audit, Amendment 1 got it down to 7.35%. Amendment 2 gets it back up to 7.61%. So that's a history throughout the year.
Okay, thanks.
We'll talk next week about the projection for 1819.
Maybe we'll call for a motion right now before we go to the next one?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of the Amendment to the General Operating Fund, Amendment 2?
So moved.
Support.
Any concerns, deliberations? Take the vote.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shotkey, yes. President FOB?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Special Revenue Fund, Amendment 2, again, Special Revenue Fund, the two primary programs there are the Special Education Center programs and the Food Service Program, which is funded with federal, federal dollars. Again, as it relates to the Special Education Program, that's impacted also by enrollments and also the operating expenses of the programs throughout the year. It's a tuition-based program. We take all the costs operating those programs, deduct from that the estimated revenue from all sources, and the remainder then is, is billed out to the local districts based on their enrollment. So as we look at those costs, we've been, over the years, been able to reduce operating costs. We also true up, Amendment 2 also trues up to what we think the final enrollments by districts are going to be. So those are the major changes for Amendment 2 in the Special Revenue Fund. Some minor adjustments in the food service programs, but nothing significant. That reduces that fund balance by about $185,000 in total, but we're still, overall, the Special Revenue Fund has a, essentially a zero fund balance. As a whole, the Special Revenue Funds, I'm sorry, Special Education Fund has a zero fund balance. Rest of the funds, we're well within what we need to operate those other funds appropriately.
Any questions? Do I have a motion for approval, Amendment 2 to the Special Revenue Fund?
So moved.
Support?
Forward.
Any concerns, deliberations?
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shotkey, yes. President FOB?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then the last fund we need to adjust or amend is the Debt Retirement Fund, and again, that's the fund that accumulates the debt retirement millage that we assess on all property within the, the district, and we pay out our, both our interest and principal payments, which are essentially known when we issue the various bond issues. So the biggest adjustment we had for this Amendment 2, for the Debt Retirement Fund, was to reduce the property tax revenue by about 1.3 million. That relates primarily to the DDA... That relates primarily to the DDA increment that they take from, from their revenue. We thought we had that number early in the year, but in conversation with the city, found out what they sent us a year ago wasn't going to change this year, so we reduced our, our revenue from the property taxes by that 1.260 million. Our expenses, we didn't change. We had those already adjusted with Amendment One. At the end, our fund balance is still adequate. Any additional funds we need to build a fund balance, we'll, we'll address in '18, '19 with that millage rate for '18, '19.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Oberst? Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
Support?
Support.
Any concerns, deliberations?
All right, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Maybe I'll hang out in case there's any producing agenda.
Yeah.
I think of a policy issue too, so.
Yeah. Next is the purchasing agenda. Do I have, well, is there any questions while Mr. Oberst is up here? If none, do I have a motion for approval of the purchasing agenda?
Some move.
Support.
Any concerns, deliberations? Go ahead.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm going to skip the first policy, we'll go back to it, just because Mr. Oberst is up here. So, you're, you're going to speak to policy 2660. Okay, why don't you explain that to us?
Yeah, and I don't know if Ms. Lewis wants to preface the comments with, with the...
Just that, Mr. Oberst did bring this to us at the policy committee meeting, but unfortunately, these were issues with timeframes, and so he checked with Ms. Pitts, and she agreed that it would be appropriate to bring it to us.
There wasn't a quorum at the, at the policy, ad hoc policy, on last Wednesday, and this particular purchasing policy needs to be adopted by the board prior to July 1st, and it's, it's, there are minor changes. There were uniform purchasing, federal uniform purchasing requirements, which actually came into being a few years ago. We weren't required to adopt these formally until our, months to our fiscal year 2018, '19. Most of our current policies were in conformity with, with the new purchasing, uniform purchasing requirements. There were just a couple minor changes we made. One was to indicate in the policy that we use federal grant money, all purchase must be in compliance with these new policies. The other minor thing is, is the new policy, new purchasing guidelines identify various levels of purchasing, one being a micro purchasing threshold right now is anything up to $3,000. That gets changed on a somewhat regular basis. We had no particular policy addressing micro purchases, so we made a small adjustment related to the micro purchasing, between the micro purchasing threshold and the current state requirement, which require approval by, by a board, as a board. And then, finally, the last minor modification that was at the very end, which indicates the superintendent shall create administrative rules to implement this policy. So, because the next ad hoc policy board didn't meet until end of this month, this need to be approved before end of the month, we bring up the first reading today to you and then second reading and adoption at our, either the, at the board session next week or the board meeting on the 18th.
Any questions for Mr. Oberst?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, if it matters, it says 2660 on our agenda, and 3660 is the actual policy, so if it can be noted, hopefully it doesn't cause us to have to resubmit.
36.
3660. It is 3660, I think.
Yeah. But then, secondly, does this, so I think I heard you say this, but this strengthens our ability to hire local, especially in communities that we're building in?
Really doesn't have an impact on that. I mean, it, not specifically, this, this just conforms our overall policy, which part of the federal regulations. We, the initiatives that we continue to take in that arena will move forward, will not be impacted negatively by this.
So, any strengthening of those initiatives would be internally?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Dr. Baker, it's a good question, it's one I had too when this came up, yeah.
Question. And, and you have the ability to track then and analyze the micro bids, that whole process, and report out if someone requested information?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, purchasing tracks all our purchases, no matter the threshold, so given, by and large, everything goes through our purchasing system, and we can pull out that by dollar amounts and vendors, anything, a lot of different ways. We continue to accumulate additional information, as I think Sheryl was here, maybe a year ago, showing some, a new purchasing software, they're allowed to grab some more information to, to address some of the issues you just brought up, Dr. Baker, so.
Good. Thank you.
There are no more questions. Do I have a motion for approval of first reading of 3660?
Some move.
Second.
Any concerns, deliberations? Please take the vote.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you, Mr. Oberst. We will go back to Bylaw 1150, just a quick review to the board. This policy was worked on in the policy committee, and there were a number of changes discussed and accepted by the policy committee, but there was no determination on final changes made as it related to whether we would institute any kind of term limits for board officers, and we would bring those to the board. At the last board meeting, we discussed and we had a vote, and there was one motion, the motion failed to have term limits after two years. There was another motion made, and that was voted through for no two consecutive years. Ms. Schottke raised the concern that we did not have a majority of the elected board here to pass that bylaw after the meeting. Ms. Pitts did indeed confirm that it is necessary, when you change a bylaw to the body, it is in our bylaws, that you need to change that with a majority of the elected members. So, five votes are needed to approve and change a bylaw. So, we are back here once again with this policy, and I, we need a motion for adoption of first reading of Bylaw 1150.
I move that we accept the recommendation that came out of the committee to change the language that we all approved at the meeting, I guess it was four weeks ago now. So, none of that language that we discussed concerning term limits and so on was really a part of that language.
Okay, so, just for clarification, there were three options presented to the board. One gave no changes to the term limits.
And that is the one that was approved by the board, by the ad hoc committee.
Okay. We were going to bring all three of them back forward, but you're making a motion for this one?
Right, for the discussion, just to accept the first one.
Okay. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
So, it was my impression that there was no recommendation by...
No, the, we voted to bring, bring it off war with the exception of the term limits, and that, with the exception of those, and all three of those options would be brought to discuss for the board. So, I'm, I was just trying to get clarification on Kathy, so.
That could for information and clarity. So, the motion on the floor then would negate another vote on, on any options that were presented in the last meeting and voted on?
Though we could make a motion on one of those options as well. You could, all three of those options are on the table. My understanding from Ms. Pitts is we had to start over the motion. So, a new motion, let me just step back.
Yeah.
What happened on Monday, because there was not, the last time we met, because there was not a majority of the elected body voting, that failed. So, we're back at...
Square one.
Square one. So, we, the committee recommended a number of wording changes, but recommended that three options be brought to the board. Dr. Baker brought one option, Mr. Ross had discussed another one, and the other option would be to not change the language, that there would be no limits. So, those are back here, they are brought to the board. We need a motion, and we can perhaps discuss it. Kathy is ma, Ms. Lewis is making a motion, so.
I'm moving to accept it, without...
Well, I guess we could do this again several more times, but, so basically, what happened is that what happened at the last board meeting didn't count.
Mm-hmm.
At the last, so it was requested at the last board meeting, and this occurred, that we would be, we would have a policy to vote for with the language changes that you suggested and an option to discuss and vote on three different other amendments to that policy. Those three policy wordings are not in this packet, so they're not in the...
Well, the first one, the first one was defeated. That one did not, the first one was defeated.
Correct.
And then, Mr. Ross's...
And none of that matters.
Right.
I mean, what happened on Monday night doesn't matter, it's back before us.
So, we are basically...
So, I'm not sure why it wasn't in the packet, but we can...
It's in the packet.
Yeah.
The options are in the packet.
It's in the packet, okay.
Can you, where's the...
Page 81.
Page 81, okay.
81.
But for clarity, the motion that, that Ms. Lewis is presenting does not include what we had decided on as a group. Even though, even though the decision, I understand the decision is not standing because it lacks the five votes of the, of the board, I understand that.
That's correct.
But for clarity purposes, Ms. Lewis's proposal does not enable us to vote in favor of that right now.
That, that's right, and we don't have a second either, do we?
Right, okay.
No second.
Okay, I see it.
No changes. Option three, no changes, correct?
Right, option three, no changes.
We have a motion and a second.
So, okay, so, so just in terms of deliberation, okay, I understand that. So, you're presenting that basically, okay...
That we don't change the language.
We don't change it, so if we want to change it, we would vote no?
That's right.
And this, okay. If it's defeated, a new motion.
All right.
So, discussion?
So, we have a motion, we have a second discussion, deliberations.
Okay, so if we vote no, then we can make another amendment.
Correct.
I mean, another motion to support this with the second option added, so.
So, just one more time, clarification, this is, there's a motion on the table to approve a first reading of changes to Bylaw 1150 that include the changes recommended by the policy committee and no changes to service time, time of service. So, that was option three, and what, what is in the packet. So, we have a motion and support for that, for approval, first reading. So, discussion.
So, if you vote no on this, then we will have to come back and discuss the whole thing, I mean, we will approve...
We need five votes to approve this, so if there are not five votes for this...
Then we have to have a new motion.
Then we can have the opportunity to have another motion and support. If there are not five votes for that, we may need to wait until we have all nine members present. I don't know, you know, I don't know how this will play out, so.
So, I spent significant time thinking about this policy, as we deliberated quite a bit two weeks ago as well, and I've just been reflecting on my own service, quite frankly, last year as secretary and this year as treasurer. And as I've thought about continuing to serve in either of these two officer roles, I have really reflected on the value of experience. So, I will tell you that, should I serve as secretary, and as I do today, I am better now that I've done it for an entire year than I would have been without it. And I know if I have the opportunity and honor to serve as treasurer again, I will be better the second year I do it, and ideally, again, beyond that. I just think there is tremendous value to experience in officer positions, and like our partner from WAGI said, continuity, continuity in leadership matters. And so, I just think that the policy as it stands allows us all to serve in an officer position, should that be the desire of the body, the board, and would allow for change should it be needed. I just worry that having a policy that limits that could handcuff us instead of allowing us to be flexible and nimble, so that's my position.
Dr. Faub, my concern was, and, you know, this probably would never happen, but, you know, since we do four and five in terms of elections, okay, let's say that we have four people who have all served as president for two years, and then elections are held, and we are defeated and all new people come on. So, I mean, you know, I'm not opposed to brand-new people becoming president, but as, you know, just to back up what Ms. Schottke was saying, that they are awesome positions in terms of your responsibility and so on, and I think somebody who'd at least served on the board for a little while might have, and it could happen, probably won't, but it could happen with the way we are elected, that there would be nobody there to elect if we had these restraints. That's my concern.
Just, yeah, just a couple points. First of all, in terms of the option that four of us agreed to last time, it was no more than two consecutive years. So, it would take eight years to get four board members, four different board members to have two years of presidential service. So, it would be quite difficult to do that mathematically. I think that, so this is, so this would just mean that no one would serve more than two years at a time in any one role, that we would rotate out in a shared governance model that would do that. I appreciate the idea of experience is important, but yet, I think that, two points for that. One is, I think that it is the duty of all of us as committee members and then as full board members to share in the responsibilities of the treasurer, and, I mean, not to sound argumentative, but to some extent, you wouldn't have had one year of experience had I decided to continue on for two years as treasurer. So, having more than one treasurer, who, or someone who's been treasurer on this, on the board, having more, there's one, two, three people who've been vice president sitting here, and that those three different people have all created policies that have led to the evaluation of the superintendent. If one person had done it, then we would have, then we would be less strong, that we would have had more people. And so, it's just, the idea of it isn't, the idea of it is that we share roles, we work towards it. If somebody wants to, I would, I think that someone that could be, or perhaps is apprehensive about being president next year, should be getting ready to be president next year, so that way, they could take over the leadership role, so that way, the whole board gets the, the ongoing significance of the, the elected Board of Equals that we have. And that's, that's really the crux of it, is that no one owns the role, no one is, no one's the experienced treasurer, no one's experienced vice president. We could have, we could have a professionalized vice president, somebody could be vice president for six years, and the superintendent evaluation, which is very important, it's the most important work that we do, is always carried out by that person who's very well experienced. However, that puts a lot of responsibility in perhaps in a way that we may not like or may not be serving the public well, and it also means that there's only one person that truly understands the role of running a superintendent evaluation. So, really, it's about sharing leadership roles.
You know what, I actually agree with almost everything you've said there, absolutely. But what I don't understand is how this bylaw is necessary to accomplish that. I feel like instituting limits is, is creating a solution where there exists no problem. Every single board member here is fully capable of voting in somebody to accomplish everything you talked about. Everything you talked about is accomplishable with our current bylaws. I, I don't see any history of longevity in officers on the board, no history of that, no history of abuse with that. I, I think it's somewhat paternalistic to suggest that board members aren't capable themselves of saying, look, someone's been in that role too long, there's someone here that's, that's new and good, should be in there. If someone wants to step forward and do that, I think, and ask for the vote, I think we're all capable of making that decision. I'm not sure what's occurred that, you know, suggests that we need a bylaw change to fix a problem. So, I mean, that's, that's what's confusing to me.
Well, we certainly have had scenarios where people have been, have served more than two years in one role, certainly with vice president, et cetera. So, I'm not suggesting that, I think what this suggests, it suggests two things. One is that it creates a, a culture that we are expected to share the roles and the responsibilities, and that no one does it for more than two years, and that if you've been treasurer, then you can move on to another role. But I do think that it is, just because we have been amicable, does not... does not mean that one person could not aspire to be in an office long enough to, to, to want to continue to be in that office role and make it more difficult for people on their board, on a board of nine people, to vote differently. So the primary thing is that this creates a strong culture that we're expected to move on to other leadership roles on this, on this board.
I just want to circle back to Ms. Lewis, because I think there was a disconnect between your understanding of, correct me if I'm wrong, you were talking about...
I'm getting confused.
The five, four, if there, we could have five new members on the board, and the current four members would be in a position that one or two of them would not be able to serve with this. So you might tie the hand of any kind of leadership or continuity with existing board members. If you had five new...
You would only be tying the hand of the person who was president last.
They could be in officer roles and maybe have been in them a couple of years, so.
Well, but we already decided we didn't want to limit it completely. It would just be no more than two consecutive years. Someone could be a vice president for two years, serve as a treasurer for a year, and go back to being vice president.
That was Mr. Ross's...
So you're saying those four members would have to switch. I'm just saying, there's all, there's only four new members. I mean, there's only four existing members. They all may, to some extent, not be able to continue in their roles.
But they could switch to another role.
Again, I just don't understand why we have, need to have a bylaw to make that happen. A shared culture should be a culture that's cultivated, not, this isn't necessarily going to accomplish that. Mr. Ross?
Call to vote.
Okay.
So right now, we are...
For point of clarity, yes.
I need clarity.
So clarity is, this is a vote that we do not institute any term limits. We leave the bylaw as it is with no specific term limits for board officers.
So a yes, I'd leave it alone.
Yes, we'd leave it alone.
Okay. And with that, Ms. Slade?
I'll say yes.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Baker?
No.
Dr. Flores?
No.
Ms. Grant is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the policy 4060. I believe Mr. Klimperens is going to come up and...
Dr. Faub, this policy change, we've been talking for many years about a green revolving fund and a way to get that started. Sustainability Coordinator Kristin Tavell, who's done the majority of the work on this, so I'm going to let her describe what's in the policy change.
May I, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you. But this one did not come to us. We did not agree. You're here because of time?
Yes.
Okay.
It's important to have this done before the end of the...
Okay.
Yes, so this policy establishes a green revolving fund, which would govern how this fund can be used going forward. It's going to be used to pay for energy savings projects throughout the district. Our first proposed project is lighting replacement at Mulick, going from T-12 lighting, which is pretty inefficient lighting, to LED. So using this fund to pay for a project with measurable energy savings, like the Mulick lighting project, we would then measure those savings with sub-meters that have been generously given to us from Consumers Energy. They are installed now, measuring our pre-installation energy usage. We will measure our post-retrofit energy usage as well and use that as a way to verify the energy savings that we expect to see from this project. Based on that performance, we would then transfer money back into our revolving fund from our utility budget into our revolving fund and essentially pay back that investment that we made for the lighting or a similar project in the future. In this way, we are going to perpetually be able to fund energy savings projects throughout the district and continuously reinvest in greening our buildings and increasing our energy savings. This policy establishes that fund. We felt it was important to be board, put into board policy so that the fund is protected and used only for very specific purposes for the measured energy savings projects. We are looking at seeding this fund initially through a Michigan Saves loan, which is administered by the State of Michigan in a nonprofit partner that offers 0% interest to K-12 public school districts. And Consumers Energy has bought down the interest rate to zero, as well as offered to make the first year's payments on that loan for the district, provided that we're using that as a tool to set up a green revolving fund, so to keep this going forward. We will have a concurrent action item to approve the pursuit of that Michigan Saves loan at the time of the second reading for this policy, I think, at the board work session. So you'll be able to see that action item as well at that time.
And Kristi, you felt like it was a two-year payback, right, that we would recoup what we've spent in about two years with that lighting project?
Correct. So yeah, and we chose the lighting project because it is quite, it's the least complex type of energy project you can do. It's very predictable, easily, easy to measure, and it's a quick payback, so that we'll be able to revolve that first round of funds very quickly, pay off that loan with no risk to the district, and be able to reinvest those funds into another energy savings project within just a few short years.
Awesome.
Yep.
Glad to see the policy around this.
Could you help me, I know that the Finance Committee did come up, timeless. Can you help me understand the timeliness with this?
Sure. So we are looking to do the lighting project this summer while the students are not in session, so we want that work to be completed in July. So we are going through the procurement process right now. In order to complete that procurement and have those funds, we need to make application to the Michigan Saves loan program, which will require, you know, board action on that and approval to do so. And in order to obtain the Consumers Energy incentives, we must complete that process this year, and really this summer. And so that is why we're moving forward with the policy to establish the green revolving fund, which helps us to get the Consumers Energy savings, or the payments, rather, and then also pursue, hopefully, the Michigan Saves loan then to pay for the upgrades to be done in July. So we're moving, you know, three, about three different projects, kind of three different components, kind of down this path.
Well, I guess as candid, I just asked because I know we did come up at the Finance Committee, and when we left that room, I didn't get the impression that, well, I guess we clearly did say that it wouldn't be coming for first reading because, and it could be my middle-aged memory, but the way I recall it was that things could move forward without this particular policy being voted on at this juncture, is the way I recall it.
So to participate in the Consumers Energy program, one of the things that they see as a measure of us establishing this green revolving fund and them agreeing to release payment to us is actually a board policy approved by our Board of Education. And so that is, that is the reason for this coming for the first reading.
Yeah, that's just not how I remember it, but fair enough.
We wanted to make sure the policy is in place before we take the bids on the project.
Correct.
In fairness to the contractor, so that we can move forward with the Michigan Saves loan and then follow with the project.
And I guess I'll just be additionally candid. I asked a question, not for lack of support of the policy or the work, but just for integrity of the process that we have. That's just why I asked the question, though.
No, that I had the same issue when the board packet was posted, didn't I, Julie? So thank you, Mr. Ross, yeah. Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion for approval of first reading of Energy Conservation Management?
To move.
Support.
Any concerns?
All right, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's great. Excited about it.
Thank you for your work.
Next is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
To move.
Support?
Support.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant is excused. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no discussion items, but I just want to let everyone know we have three dates out there for the board to weigh in on for the retreat this summer. Please get back to Dana as soon as possible. And those dates are confirmed as a positive with our facilitator from Harvard, so that we're, huge accomplishment here. So get back to Ms. Beak, so we can get that on the calendar, hopefully, hopefully. Public comment?
We have none.
Superintendent's comments?
Thank you.
Board member comments? Mr. Ross?
No comment.
Dr. Baker?
Yeah, this is going to sound a little bit convoluted, but I was thinking about this when President Wegi Foundation was congratulating us about how great we are about partnering with the parks. And it is a fantastic thing. But I have to say that I learned about how great Grand Rapids Public Schools are in partnering with the parks from the parks and from the Wegi Foundation. And so oftentimes, we get credit for being great leaders on things that we learned we should be good leaders on from people in the community. And I think that it's really fantastic that we have this collaboration. It was never my idea to share the parks, I mean, our green space with the parks, but it sure is a great idea, and I'm glad that we support it. And I'm glad that the community supports it, and certainly the Wegi Foundation's supported this. So anyway, just to give credit back to where it's due, so.
Dr. Flores?
No comment.
Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, just to echo Dr. Baker. I know a lot of the families in the Burton area, we've used that park itself. And I think of other areas that are adjacent to our, to our schools. I mean, walking distance, you can enjoy it. It's safe. And it's so critical, especially in urban places. I grew up in a place where we couldn't play in our park. It was dangerous. And so to see a safe place where families can actually enjoy that and benefit the space to use for learning and all of those kinds of things, it's really exciting. It's really exciting.
Ms. Schottke? Yeah, if there was a theme for tonight, it would be partnership. I was just jotting down all of the organizations to thank for partnering with us, from Art Prize to the Gram, to Davenport, to Consumers Energy twice tonight, our parks, the Wegi Foundation, gosh, and certainly our employees. You know, 40 years of service, you can't be successful in that without partnership, employer-employee partnership. And how grateful I am tonight to say thanks for our community and our people in partnering to do what's best for our children.
Ms. Slade?
Well, I would like to mention the fact that the English Language Learner Awards took place. And I was absolutely thrilled to see 242 different families there celebrating their children who had received a three-point or higher grade point average. And these kids had come to us speaking another language besides English. And here they are, high school kids now earning three-point, grade point averages with those kinds of backgrounds. So I was very pleased, and hats off to Dr. Amida Gunell. And also, I would like to say hats off to Malika Brown and what she has done for equity for the girls. I went to her, it was called Grade School to Grad School. And Malika had kids from all over, girls from all over the Grand Rapids Public Schools. They had different seminars, breakout sessions, they had a luncheon. But it was just a celebration of young women and all the kinds of things that they have in front of them and the possibilities they have. So I was very proud of that. And I was also very proud of the fact that Wendy and I, Dr. Faub and I, were asked to come to the Grand Rapids Parks and open up the Aberdeen Splash Park. So once again, Grand Rapids Public Schools, Aberdeen's kindergarten and fifth grade all came down and splashed around. So it was wonderful, and I enjoyed that.
Yeah, just a huge shout out to the DACA program and the leadership there. It was just awesome, just the number of awards lining up and just my genuine heartfelt appreciation for those employees for 40 years of service and more. So that's it. Meeting adjourned.